So you entered the race a little bit on the later side. And we're interested in knowing first and foremost, what was your thought process? And when were you making your decision to run this time?
Yeah, I have, you know, since the age of 22 been immersed in public education. And as I mentioned before, right, I started as a teacher and department chair. And then throughout those years, got my administrative credential and two master's degrees. And in my mind, I thought perhaps one day I would want to try to be on a school board. But for me to be qualified, I think it was very important, even though I'm an alum, to have kids in the district. And so, you know, my oldest is now in her fourth year in the district. But for me, it meant more than having kids in the district. I needed to get in those classrooms as well. And so I subbed, not because I was wanting to do that because of school board. But when I was asked to sub during COVID, I have the background, the credentials. So I stepped up. Usually for subbing purposes, retired teachers often sub. And during COVID, retired teachers were not feeling safe subbing. So I subbed and through subbing, I was getting, you know, more insight into the classrooms. And I volunteer as a project cornerstone reader, which is the SEL program at the elementary school. And I have two, two children in the district and two different kids need different things. So I was able to assess the district, you know, as a parent, as a teacher, alum educator. And it was at the end of last year through attending board meetings as well. But I thought, you know what, I think I might be qualified now. And so it was last spring that I started thinking about running. This is my first time running for any office. And so for me, last spring, I was thinking this is a, this is not too late to consider running. And, and then in the, in the summer, I, I picked up the paperwork to file on the first day possible, which was July 18th. So in the first day that you could go and unofficially declare your candidacy, I was the first person to do that. And so for me, that was showing my clear desire, clear intent. And I believed that, um, that was the, you know, that was the first step. And as soon as I unofficially picked up the paperwork, I was ready to go.
Was there anything that you saw during COVID while you were subbing? Whether that was, had to do with how schools were being run or the board's decision making at that time? That made you think, uh, give you a greater sense of urgency about running now? Not just, I'm qualified now.
Yeah. So for me, it was teacher morale, seeing low teacher morale and understanding the why. And the communication piece, I felt like that piece was a big reason why teacher morale was low. And so, um, seeing low teacher morale and understanding it from an educator's perspective was one of the reasons in terms of COVID. The communication piece again, I felt was kind of the break, breakdown in terms of why teachers were upset. I know the teachers want to teach their children, their students. But I felt like the issue there was that they were being told on this day that you are to return. Safety measures would be put in place, will be put in place, but they weren't already there. And so they were having to trust that these, whether it was the air purifiers or the different components of a safe classroom will be put in place. And so it was having to, it was not knowing if they would be there or not. So that was one thing that I was seeing in the sub shortage. I, I believe that the reason there is a sub shortage is because of how little we are paid. I consider my subbing volunteer work. We are paid significantly less than, for example, M V L A. When I started subbing, we were paid $165 for the entire day. So I think we were making around $25 per hour. I have a teaching credential, two master's degrees and an administrative credential. And when we sub, whether it's me or a different sub, it is a full day job. It is not childcare. It is teaching and is learning. And so I do want to, I do think it is imperative that we match our sub pay to surrounding districts, especially with COVID still exists. And so there are going to be teachers who are out because their child has COVID or because they have COVID. And what we want is we want highly qualified subs. Also, what I was noticing is that I was getting for certain days, I don't know, 20 requests. And so it was because it was a PD day and I can only be at one place. And so other teachers would email me and say, but then I can't go to PD. And I wish I could be 20 Shauna's and go to all these different classrooms. But in addition to covering for sickness, professional development is very important and we don't have enough subs to cover it. And so instead of lowering, you know, looking at lowering the standard to sub, we should be paying subs more and matching neighboring districts. So I was seeing that the, the lack of sub pay was resulting in a sub shortage. And I would want to increase the sub pay. And also I feel like the SEL programs, the elementary schools and middle school, I was primarily subbing or I was only subbing. And I can tell you why I've only been subbing elementary and middle school. I taught high school for 10 years, but the reason I was only subbing elementary and middle school is because high school gets out significantly later than elementary school. So I don't have childcare. So it's important that they, the hours are similar. And so it also hit me during COVID that whereas our high schools do have very strong mental health programs, very different than when I went to Gunn. And I'm happy to see that, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done at the elementary school level and the middle school level. And I thought, if I'm on the board, this is one thing I'm passionate about. Because I'm seeing it firsthand that it's very disparate what we have at the high school level versus the elementary level. And I can talk about academic early intervention, very important. But I also feel the same way with mental health intervention being important early versus, you know, finding concerns in the later grades.
Thank you. It seems like you've seen quite a few operational challenges facing educators in the district. I'm wondering, when you look at the board, the board's decision making, whether it's been around COVID or, or other issues, are there specific decisions that you feel like had you been on the board, you would have made them differently or you would have voted in a different way on particular issue?
Yeah, um, one example I could bring up was the adoption of the ELA curriculum, which was last May. And that ELA curriculum was being piloted at the elementary schools. I believe there were 25 teachers who were piloting the curriculum. Now, what I know, being an educator, is when you're asked to pilot a curriculum, you're a veteran teacher, you have a lot of experience and you were chosen because you're trusted veteran teacher. And so from, I also was subbing during that time and volunteering. And so the curriculum that they ended up adopting was Benchmark. And from my experience in the classroom and from hearing teachers' comments, over 80% of the teachers said that this curriculum will exacerbate the achievement gap, is not meeting the needs of our students, is resulting in more behavioral issues. It does not allow for differentiated instruction and does not allow for like follow through activities. So if an activity ends suddenly and some kids haven't finished and other kids have, it doesn't allow for what to do next, which is an important part of differentiated instruction. Is if a kid finishes early, here's what you can do to add on. And so I spoke at that board meeting because I had my own personal insight in the classroom to see that this curriculum was not meeting the needs of students. And there were teachers explaining why this curriculum was not meeting the needs of the students, especially the struggling students. And I could see it with the behavioral issues when subbing and trying to use this curriculum. Students who were listening and engaged before were no longer listening and engaged. And that got frustrated easily because a lot of the curriculum was either way too hard or way too easy, different parts. And so I did stand up and say, um, this isn't, at this point, the teachers are the experts, right? We've listened to health experts in terms of reopening. And now it is important that we trust the teachers that we asked to pilot. Because it is a lot of work. Now I'm going to go put on my educator hat. If I'm asked to pilot a curriculum, it is a yes. But I know that it's a lot of extra work, right? You don't, you're not getting extra pay, but it's a lot of extra work. And I know that teachers who pilot and do it in good faith, do give it all that they can to make it work for their students. And they, teachers want their students to succeed. So they said, this does not help students. I did stand up, I would have voted not to pass the curriculum. And what they wanted was not, okay, we're done. We're done, we're not, we're going to go back to know, to what we were doing before. But instead they were saying they wanted to look at a curriculum called F and P. I think stands for Fontaine and Canal. And they said, we would like to look, we could, it was close. Thank you. That was the curriculum they wanted to try piloting. And they said, we think this could help meet the needs of all students. So they weren't asking, instead of piloting, can we just stop this process? They wanted to pilot a different curriculum to better meet the needs of the students. And so I would have voted to not adopt the Benchmark curriculum. So right now for language arts, we have OG, which is phonics. I am in favor of a clear phonics program for students. Many students learn how to, in order to learn how to read, need a systemic science-based phonics program. I'm in favor of that. They're using Benchmark for reading. This was the area that teachers, this was the curriculum that teachers were saying is not meeting the needs of our students. This year, in addition, they're using iReady. This is new as an assessment for reading. They got trained on this iReady assessment about three weeks ago. I was concerned about the training, and this is a little off topic, but it connects what I was saying before about low teacher morale. This training for iReady was from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. On one of the hottest days of the year, mid beginning of September. Teacher said, our classrooms are 96 degrees. Could we please do this training in an air conditioned space? Whether it's our house, a coffee shop, district office, somewhere that has air conditioning? And they were told, no, you have to do it in your rooms. So again, this ties back to, I'm not seeing teachers being treated as professionals. So now back to the language arts curriculum in terms of iReady. So now we have iReady. We have Hagerdy for phonemic awareness and we have Teachers College for writing. And so having all these different curricula for language arts, it might be hard to connect the different pieces to build upon each other. And now iReady, students have 80 minutes of iReady lessons each week, which they're being asked to bring into the curriculum. So it's just a lot of changes all at once. And we should be using consistent assessment methods. And teachers were trained two years ago in a method called BAS Benchmark Assessment System. And now they're using iReady. So it's, I just worry about a lot of changes all at once. Teacher's voice is not being heard. Teacher's not willing to pilot programs again. These pilot programs are essential. And it, and also at the end of the day, what I look at is what's in the best interest of the children? That's what I care about. So this did not seem to be in the best interest of the children. So I would have voted differently.
So Shauna, do you think that the responsibility for the failure there was on the superintendent's shoulders or on the boards? Both equally, one more than the other?
Um, in this example, the board did vote four to one. And I feel like the four board members who voted to adopt this curriculum were not looking at it in terms of what is in the best interest of children in terms of this is what the pilot teachers are saying is in the best interest of meeting the needs of our PAUSD students and what they were seeing in the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Well, can I just ask you to expand on, on how the superintendent fits into that? Because the, the, the board members that voted for it were essentially deferring to the superintendent.
Yes. And so I do feel like his view was not taking into account the teacher feedback. And so, yes, he was wanting this curriculum to pass. And I do understand the importance of being in compliance and finding a curriculum and saying, we now have this curriculum. I can see that side. And the teachers also wanted to have this adopted curriculum to be in compliance, but not that adopted curriculum. And so I think that was an opportunity for there to be a meeting of the minds saying, yes, we're in agreement, we need compliance. This curriculum, if we are to be trusting our professional teachers, they're saying this does not meet the needs of our students. And so let's give it more time with a clear deadline of, we need to pick a curriculum by this time. And it should be one that the teachers are saying meets the needs of our students, can be differentiated, lends to, clearly addresses the standards and also lends to connecting better with the other curriculum already in place. And so, yeah, the superintendent and I disagreed on this issue. And we're looking at it differently.
And I was curious, I know that some of the board members who voted in favor of it said basically what you just alluded to, which is that they needed to have an adopted curriculum and they needed to be compliant with their own, having a curriculum. And that this was the deadline they've set and so they didn't want to wait any longer. How would you respond to that?
Yeah. And so that's why I definitely can, I, I heard what they were saying. But they asked teachers to pilot a curriculum and give feedback. And if the feedback for this curriculum is that it does not meet the needs of our students, especially our struggling students, that is an opportunity to say, okay, we, they, they were using, it wasn't like teachers weren't using a reading curriculum. They were using a mix of Teachers College and they were using OG. But to be in compliance, they wanted a different curriculum. And so I would have in that situation extended the timeline so as to meet the needs of our students.
Thank you.
So, so just to broaden this out a bit, do you think that this particular example you're giving is indicative of a bigger issue or problem? And if so, what is that and how would, how would you tackle it?
Yeah, this problem ties into the iReady training problem that I was addressing, which is teachers' voices not being heard, respected or validated, and not treating teachers as professionals. If we don't have teachers willing to pilot programs, then future programs will maybe be implemented too quickly or not thoroughly. In terms of professional development, what I know as an educator and through my administrative work, is that when teachers have, say, in their professional development, when it is more like professional learning communities, PLCs, when there is a master teacher coming in who then helps implement the, the new changes in the classroom, culture improves. And so, for example, at M V L A district, just because what I do is I look at neighboring districts. If I'm on the board, I want to look at best practices at neighboring districts. And so, for example, at M V L A, in March, they survey teachers. What do you need? What do you need to be learning to address the needs of our students, to hit state standards and to meet our district goals? And so they share which different professional development they need and how they would like to, to learn. Whether it's, we want a master teacher from Cali to be teaching this, who's an expert on this area. Or we would like someone from out of the district, but we would like that person to stay and come into the classes to help implement. Any professional development that I had or any, I went to like training different states. But what I, if I went to a training out of state or a training in state, the expectation was that I would be able to help teachers implement it into their own classrooms. And so I would stay with the teacher and help them implement. So it's having, it's having our teachers be treated as leaders and allowing them to plan and be part of the professional development program. It's also the communication style. What I know as a teacher, what I know as a department chair and as a, as a human, is the way I respond to people in email communication is with understanding and empathy. I might not agree with you, right? I taught for 10 years, I had many parents, different students, and they wanted different things. I could not always agree with them. But I feel like because of the mutual respect I showed parents, because of the mutual respect I showed students, we were able to work together to help the needs of the student. And so I do feel like the communication style to teachers, I hear that teachers are afraid to push back against the superintendent.
I hate to interrupt it, but I would like you to, to really address what you would do about this. As a board member, I mean, it's one thing to describe a problem. It's another thing to get to the solution. And from, from what you're saying, it sounds as if you have serious reservations about the management of the district by the administration. Because that's where this all starts.
So I would want one of the goals being set for the superintendent to be clearly about communicating, communication style with teachers, communication style with parents. I think that should be one of the measurable goals that is part of the evaluation process. I think that is very important in addition, of course, to student safety, student achievement. And, yeah, so I would want that to be clearly stated goal with these. We need to, that the superintendent knows ahead of time, this is the expectation. And we're all on the same page.
Given the likelihood that none of the current serving trustees would have a difference of opinion with you on that, you know, that I think they would all agree that, that, that there should be good communication and that the district administrators should give careful respect to the teachers. What, what is causing this situation to, to perpetuate? What, what is it?
I believe that there's, because there are no consequences for what I would consider poor communication. There do not seem to be any consequences or addressing with transparency of poor communication.
Okay. So basically, this is an accountability of the superintendent that you're raising.
Yeah.
That's the underlying problem that needs to be fixed.
Yes, it is one of the problems that I would want to fix.
Okay.
Shauna, in your questionnaire response for, for our questionnaire, you said that some decisions seem to be made either based on politics or expediency. And I know we just addressed the expediency, but I'm wondering if you have an example of, of what you mean by politics and, and when that came into play?
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I would use an example, I, I think it's easier. I'm going to start with the expediency, just because that's the first one that comes to my mind. And so in terms of expediency, I believe in 2019, PAUSD decided to change which schools Tinsley program children would attend. I understood why the district made this decision to shorten the bus routes. As I've said, if I am on the board, I would like to ride the bus with Tinsley students to understand actually how much time it takes to get to and from school. What is that bus experience like? But at that time, when the decision was made quickly, now we have students who've made friends at certain schools and that bus is being taken away. So a parent has to decide, do I take my child out of the school where they have made friends and made a community or somehow get my child to school? Right? And so that, that was a change where again, outcome, and the reason for the change, I understood, shorter bus routes, great, everybody, you know, wants that. But it's just these sudden changes. An example from last year was the, you know, the weekly, I, I'm not saying this, but I do read the weekly every day, the online articles and then the weekly. And so I read, you know, Palo Verde is moving to Coverley. No parent was aware of that before reading it in the weekly newspaper. And so perhaps the reason why is to save money. Okay. Because if you get the students off, off the campus, you can do the project quicker. Okay, we can save money. Perhaps it's also that children, you know, learn better when there isn't construction noise. Okay. But the, the, the way that it was done so quickly, without support in place. So an example of support in place would be, we are doing this and we will provide you with buses. Okay. But that was not guaranteed. And so for us parents, we are reading about this in the newspaper. We have no idea if our kids will be given transportation or not. And what I can say now is my children are at Palo Verde. I advocated very hard for buses. I'm very, and working, you know, and emailing a lot with Eric Holm. I would like to thank Eric Holm and all the work he did to get buses. I was on those Zoom calls, I was emailing. And so there are two buses, which reduces traffic, builds community and helps the environment. But, you know, for example, my son is too afraid to go to the office if he gets hurt because the office is in the parking lot, right? Things like that, the one, when we're thinking about these big changes, are we looking at it through the lens of children? What have we done to the Young Fives program that is there? And the preschool family program, when you have all those kids on campus and there are now a lot of kids, my children like to play. I'm a huge fan of play-based education, right? Including giving children the opportunity to play in elementary school, but they have to sit for 20 minutes while the fourth and fifth graders walk over and play and then they can go play. And so I do think that physical education is important and not getting to have your energy out during lunch. There is one bathroom on a, on the campus. So, you know, my kids go, the toilets are really small because they're meant for really little kids, right? And so it's all these planning things of, did we think about, will this work for children? And did we give ourselves enough time to set this up so that it would work for children? And if our kids are too afraid to walk out in the parking lot to go to the office, how do we fix that? So I'm always looking at changes through what is in the best lens of children.
So in this case, Shauna, what would, what, what, what would the board have, should, what should have done better?
Yes. So now I can go back to October. This could be an idea, hey, we do have this land, right? Which could be used. So let's, let's mention, this could be a possibility. Before we make any decisions, we are going to gather community input and we're going to have a Zoom meeting to first explain why we're thinking about doing this. Because that why piece is missing. And I think for a lot of parents, a lot of their concerns, if the why was just answered, people would, the culture here, the collaborative community could come back. So why are you thinking about doing this, Don Austin Board? Why are you thinking about doing this? Just help us understand, then get community feedback. So my feedback would have been, um, I want to make sure that Young Fives and preschool family are protected. These programs have been here for a long time and I want to make sure that they are part of this process. So make sure that their voices are in here too. Let's make sure neighborhoods are brought in and teachers and administrators. So everybody's voice is being heard. And then get some survey results. And then maybe at the end, I might have been in huge favor of this move. And many of the parents very well may have been. But what the difference is that the culture here would be one of, this is exciting. This sounds great. Let's all get on board, right? Instead, when it happens so fast, it seems like the rug is taken out from under us. We don't know why. And what I want for this district is for parents to understand why decisions are, why decisions are made. I remember I read on Palo Alto Moms, I think it was either the night before school started or the first day of school, um, parents upset that their child was in a multi-grade class. Okay. And not at Aloney, at a different elementary school. And this parent was really upset because they didn't realize that their child was behind by a whole grade. And I'm like, oh no, this, we could, we could have fixed this. All that we need to happen is communication. It is possible that at some of the 12 elementary schools, there will be mixed age classes. I'm going to explain why, not Shauna's going to explain why, but the board is going to explain why. And if your child is in a mixed grade class, it has nothing to do with their academic level. It's, you know, we, this is how we build classes. And so all those parents who, when they saw mixed age, decided it either meant that their child was a year ahead or their child had behavioral issues. I just watched these parents spinning, spinning, spinning. Um, and so that's an example of what I did there is I did not, you know, address it as a board member. I just decided to share, here are the positives about a mixed age classroom. And so I went on and said, here are the positives. Here's perhaps, you know, why this could have happened. But it shouldn't be a parent like me going in and doing that and only focusing on the positives. And I will tell you that the parents, when they saw that and, oh, it means I could get more aid hours. Because aids, you know, you get more aid hours in kindergarten. Oh, here's the benefits. But again, what happens when there's this type of tension is parent anxiety goes up, parent anger goes up, mistrust goes up. And the board could have done that. And yes, let's say that they sent out an email in June, would there have been upset parents in June? Yeah, there would have been. But I, as a board member, will be happy to communicate with parents. I will not be afraid to share, you know, ahead of time. This change might be happening. If you have questions, please come meet with me, come call me. I want to be there and you might not like my answer, but at least you'll understand the why. So it's not the night before school starts, um, that your kid, you find out they're in a mixed age class and you think something that is not accurate.
Sounds like you would have done some pro- Sounds like you would have done some proactive communication and and seen the issue coming before it actually.
Yes, yes. And I think from working, you know, as a teacher and department chair, what I knew and I was, you know, the department chair of the ELL department. And what I wanted to build with the ELD program at Limerick is parent community. And so what I did there is I built the first English language advisory committee, which was a ELAC, which all the districts now have, but at that time we did not have it. And so what I saw there was parents not under not understanding. And so I I found translators for our meetings. I built up parent community. And by having EL parents meeting together once a month with me, with translators, the sense of EL community started. And once the parent community was there, once they trusted me, then also the student community got stronger because these parents now knew each other. Now the students knew each other. And then we helped to form the DLEC, the District Language Advisory Committee. But then I thought, how do we get these students to form a stronger community? Because it's all about community. And so we started, which is something I would like to start here, which is a district English language learner speech contest. Because the English language learners don't usually get the accolades, right? Maybe not winning the awards. But what if you do a speech contest for only English language learners? And so we did one for the different levels of ELD. And we had board members come and be the judge. We had city council members. And so whereas before ELD students might not have been seen or felt recognized, they were recognized for their achievement by board members and being first of all, meeting board members, being seen and parents were just so happy that their children got this opportunity. And public speaking, I think it's hard for everyone. You know, it's hard for me at times. And so building up public speaking skills and continually working on the essays and also meeting ELD students across the district. The ELD community that was built helped improve morale, helped improve the sense of collaboration and brought EL students within the school in a different way. And students say, oh, I heard you won the ELD speech contest. Congratulations. Oh, my God. So anyway, that's who I am as a as an educator, as a department chair. That's who I'd be as a board member is how can we build community? How can we improve communication? Not take it away. Yeah.
I want to move on to student mental health unless Bill or Zoe wanted to jump in on something related to this.
No, I think we should move on. Yeah.
Yeah, in in your survey, Shauna, you said that you would want to change homework policy, bell schedules and course requirements to aid student mental health. And I'm wondering what ideas do you have beyond what is already in place that could be implemented if you are on the board?
So it's not necessarily I'd want to change. So when I, you know, when I was at Limerick, I was on the homework committee to create homework guidelines. So that's great. I helped to create homework guidelines, but it doesn't matter what you create. It doesn't matter what is there as policy. We need to know that it's being implemented. Right? So the biggest part of being on the homework committee at first was coming up with homework guidelines for Limerick. But then it's assessing are teachers actually following these guidelines? And so when I look at changing, it's not necessarily changing the policy, but looking at the implementation and surveying students, how much homework do you actually have? And and is it being? And what I would want to see and something we did at Limerick is trying to avoid test stacking. Now, what I mean by that is policies often don't go over as well as guidelines. So I am in favor of guidelines. We, as a community, want to help students. Hopefully, everybody agrees. We, as teachers, want to help students. So how can we help students? We can say that English papers will not be due on Thursdays. Okay, department, why are we doing this again? Oh, because I'm, no, we're doing this for students. Math tests will be given on Fridays. And therefore, English papers not on Fridays. History tests will be given on Tuesdays. And that is something that might not be in the homework guidelines, but it helped the test stacking and avoiding the test stacking helps it so students aren't cramming the night before. And so I want to look at all the practices we have in terms of reduce in terms of reducing student stress. And so another example is I've been talking to many, many students for years, and I do think this has been a problem since I went to Gun. Not enough college counselors. So it's great that we have college counselors. We're very lucky, but we need more. Because what happens and it's happened since I went to Gun is there are families that can afford to get private college counselors. And in we, if we think about student mental health, suddenly it's junior year or senior year and students haven't had the opportunity to meet with their counselors. And what I'm hearing from students is unless you're very proactive, you might not be able to get the opportunity to meet with your college counselor. And so I want there to, I want also the whole knowledge that there are many paths. DANSA is a great college. This is what I always said as a teacher at Limerick. We have great community colleges. DANSA and Fethal, let me help you understand how, if you go to DANSA and Fethal, how you can later matriculate into the UC. But I also would want us to walk the walk. When I went to Gun, and I think it's very similar still, the speakers that would come for backglow or it would come for graduation. We're from Stanford. We're from Ivy Leagues. So I put, you know, if you look at my website, I include San Jose State, I include schools that maybe these aren't the speakers coming to Gun because I want students to look at me and say, okay, she's walking the walk. She is very proud of her schools, which aren't necessarily like the, you know, they're not the Ivy League schools, but we should be proud of the different paths. But then we need students who who went to maybe who entered the vocational trade or students that went to community colleges to come back and speak to students and parents so that students and parents understand that there are many different paths to take after college and there is not one definition of success. And so when looking at all these things, looking through the lens of mental health, we can tell students it's okay to go to any college, but they need to see it from their peers coming back. And they need to see it through the speakers at graduation. And then in terms of student mental health as well, I've been very interested in the self program at Gun. I mean, I'm interested in all the programs, but from talking to students about the self program is that here's an example of a change. At the beginning of the year, I couldn't figure out why self suddenly changed to every other week. I said to the students, do you know why it changed? No. Okay, I'll figure, you know, I said, I'll I'll have to figure that out. Well, the Gun Oracle explained the change. It was due to a pay discrepancy between Pally teachers and gun teachers. Again, I don't know how this pay discrepancy happened. But we should not be making these decisions about student mental health and wellness based on pay discrepancy. And so we have mental health programs at the different schools. We need strong mental health programs. I want to look at which mental health program is best practices. I'm always wanting to take best practices from a school or best practices from a department or best practices from different districts. And so I think we should be making choices about these programs, not because there was a mistake in pay discrepancy, but rather in terms of what is meeting the needs of our students. And, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Shauna, I I want to switch gears here and and ask you about differentiated learning and particularly the politics of this campaign, which has seemed to have drawn out and divided the parent community between you and Nicole's candidacy regarding this issue of how well, how, which of you is going to best serve the needs of the students who are excelling and whose parents are advocating for more rigorous curriculum options for those students? I'm sure you're aware of the commentary that's taking place about Nicole on by your supporters basically painting her as someone that is more concerned with the issues of equity and how we bring up the 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 kids that are the most challenged in their learning compared to those kids who fall into this more accelerated category. Can you explain why that parent community is divided in their support for the for the two of you? And what you have articulated that makes you different in your approach to Nicole?
And so for me, differentiation and equity go hand in hand. As a teacher, I could not address the needs of the students in my classroom without using differentiated instruction. I had students in my classroom who had IUPs, who had five oh fours, who were English language learners. And then students that were at grade level and students who were above grade level. And so an example of differentiated instruction in my English class would be different prompts, different essay prompts, for example, for different students. Differentiation takes to to have teachers be able to implement differentiation takes strong professional development and resources within the classroom. So for me, I am running because I would like to address the achievable needs of all students. That includes students who are struggling and behind grade level. Students are at who are at grade level and students who are ahead of grade level. This can be done within a classroom. I did it as a teacher. And I was able to meet the needs of a wide variety of students. I'm running on my experience of being a teacher of being a department chair, of having two master's degrees in education, of looking at through the lens of I'm not going to focus on just the students who are ahead or just the students who are at grade level. I'm focusing on meeting the needs of all students. Because for me, there's an academic piece and there's the emotional piece. And what I see as a teacher, what I see as a sub is when students are being challenged and supported. Students are engaged. And what I know is that engaged students are happy students and engaged students love learning. And that's what I want for all students is for them to be engaged and supported. And I'm here, I'm running to help all students with a lens of what is best for all students, not one particular group. And I have the back, I think if I have parent support, my guess is parent support is because I have a background in education. I've been in education for the since twenty two. And so I'm looking at it through the lens of an educator.
I guess what I'm trying to get at here is that what you're articulating is exactly the same things that the other candidates are articulating. But but the parents that want a a more rigorous program for their children are supporting you. And they're actively criticizing the others. So something is out there that is causing that. And I'm trying to understand what it is. This is particularly obvious Chinese American community where, which is somewhat divided in this community, as is every the the entire parent community, obviously, where the perception is that you're going to be stronger advocate for those kids that are doing well than the other candidates. And I I'm just trying to understand.
My guess is because I'm an educator and because I can say this is how I did it. And I know that it's important to support and challenge all students and I'm committed to doing so. As an educator, I know how to differentiate within a classroom. And I'm clear on what supports I would give teachers to help make this happen. And so other candidates can, you know, introduce differentiated instruction into their candidacy. But I've been clear about it since the day I decided to run. And since that day, I've stayed true that this is important for our students. And I can explain how I'm going to do it and why I'm going to do it and how it achieves equity. And I I'm guessing that if the parent support is due to the fact that I have the background in education to look at it through the lens of what is in the best interest of children and maybe trust is there because I've walked the walk for twenty years being in the classroom helping students, differentiating instruction, working with EL students who there's a wide range of EL students and how do you meet the needs of them? How do you work with an entire department to make differentiation happen? So I've, I mean, I I've done it. And so if there is you know, different parents wanting, I think they say, okay, Sean's done it. We've seen her in the classroom. She's here. All that we know about her is that she has focused on public education since twenty two. She she has the educational expertise to bring about this needed change.
If I can ask a follow up just specifically on differentiation, you've talked a lot about the importance of differentiation and the importance of teachers being able to meet the needs of a variety of students within a classroom. But I think the question is about what your position is on tracking or on having multiple levels of classes that kids are split into. I know this is particularly a question with math. And I'm curious about your position on that. And since I think you've spoken in favor of making sure we have more advanced classes, how you'd respond to people who have concerns that that kind of something by level can harm equity by having kids pre sorted by their progress in a class.
Right. So I am in favor of the middle school math being differentiated within a classroom. Because when you track too early, you can get stuck in a track. And it's very hard to exit that track. And then that that's fifth grade decision that your parent makes or that is made for you going into sixth grade can affect your outcomes in high school and closed doors. So what I am in favor of is within a classroom in middle school math is meeting the needs of our learners, doing flexible grouping. There are skip tests, so the student can be in a class and be doing flexible grouping, different levels of work. And maybe at the end, if they are, you know, wanting more challenge and they pass the skip test, they have the opportunity to take the skip test. But in order to promote equity and in order to reduce stress, having a delaned class, middle school math, where you have the skip test for those kids who are way ahead is ideal. But my concern was we delaned without support. And so if we're going to make a change, delaning, help close achievement gap, great. Help reduce student stress, great. But we didn't support in the classroom, meaning more professional development. It might have, it might mean we need an aid for middle school math to help differentiate within the classroom. It might mean if we're looking at the big picture of schools and staffing, that those middle school math classes have fewer students. That would have to be discussed, you know, at the at a bigger level. But that was a big change without support. And so that the flaw in it was that it was delaned without support.
So it sounds like you're broadly in favor of delaning, at least for middle school with the.
Yes, not for high school. No, I mean, so then we. Yes, I just want to make that clear. I think ninety ninety eight or ninety six percent of high schools in the United States have laning for high for in high school level. And we do have that already. There's different tracks and levels and I I wouldn't be in favor of getting rid of that. But I do think waiting to track till later, which is high school helps promote equity and helps to close the achievement gap. But it needs to be done right. And when we make decisions as a district, we need to, if we're going to move Palo Verde, we need to make sure there's transportation. If we're going to, you know, Delane math, we need to make sure there's support in place. So we're helping all students learn and we're meeting the needs of the students because and, you know, the goal is close the teeth and help students and let's make that happen.
Thank you.
We're running out of time. I do want to give you an opportunity to respond to the people that have raised questions about your side gig of consulting with parents about their kids' school choices. Can you describe for us what that business is that you're doing and and how it may or may not be relevant to this campaign?
Well, I want to say, I want to start by saying I'm not doing it now. The minute I decided to run, which would have been the first day I could unofficially file, which was July eighteen. I have not been doing, I've not been engaged in school consulting. So when I started the school consulting business, what was happening to me at like the preschool level is parents were asking me, what preschool should I send my kids to? Shauna, you grew up here. What do you think? And so I was constantly talking to families about preschool, preschool, preschool. Do I want Montessori? Do I want play based? Do I want academic? Do I want Reggio? And so I thought, you know, there's a lot of families who move here and are overwhelmed by preschool choice and daycare, especially if you're moving from a different country. So I thought I'm going to start touring some of the preschools. And then what I was hearing is families wanted to learn more about private schools. So I toured all the private schools. And I also became more familiar with neighboring public schools. And so this business was I was started in a relocation way of families who move here want to understand the educational options for their children. The way our school system works is very different than other countries. And so parents could. Parents could say, I'm renting, can you help me understand the difference between Los Altos and Pal, and Palo Alto School District? Yes, I can. Um, and for some families, the fact that Los Altos, the middle school starts at seventh grade versus sixth grade. Matter. That was, they really wanted to understand that more. Um, for some families, understanding that one district is a K through twelve or TK through twelve versus K through eight, why does that matter? I could help explain what's the difference between a K through eight. So I was helping families understand the educational choices. I've been in education for a long time and I felt like that was a way to help families. Um, whether it was preschool, um, public school or private school options, some of my families. Um, this, or understanding the TNSA program, some of my families have learning, that the children have learning differences. And PAUST was not meeting the needs and they wanted to understand if my kid, if my child has dyslexia, what are the options? And I can say, well, I can tell you about the private school options. Um, I'm not going to be part of any process with the, with the school district. That's not what I can do, but I can tell you about the dyslexia options. And so it is, it is something, I I care about education. I could talk about it all day long. If you want this interview to go all day, I could keep going.
I imagine you could.
Don't worry, you're like. Um, so I started this because I love talking about education. This is something I love doing. Um, and I would help families just decide what is in the best needs for their child. Um, and so, no, I'm not doing that and I have no plans to continue it, but I learned a lot from doing. Oh, sorry.
That is us, I think. Yeah.
Oh, shit. Oh, I heard somebody talking. I thought maybe I was.
I don't know where that was coming from.
Oh, it wasn't me. Okay, um. So I'm, I mean, I learned a lot from school consulting and by visiting different districts, by looking at different private schools, I could also. I I look at best practices. And if there is a, you know, a school where the students seem engaged or the teachers seem happy. What are the, how are they treating the teachers at the school? And is it something that we could implement here in terms of? Um, teacher morale or meeting the needs of students? What kind of curriculum are different districts using? I find that fascinating if different districts are using different curriculum and um, how can that affect a student? So I think it just made me more knowledgeable about education and it helped me help the community. Um, including, I mean, I would get phone calls and from, you know, people in different states. I help people in different countries who were moving here in six months. And it's really difficult to understand the educational choices. So I would help understand the different aftercare options or the different, um, yeah.
But but you would not continue to this practice if you were elected to this school? And and.
I've never said I would.
No, I I'm not. I haven't heard that. I just wanted, I felt it was important for you to.
Thank you. Yes.
I also maybe, maybe the last question, unless Jocelyn has another one or 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 Joey or Adam, but. You've talked, there's been a lot of talking in the weeds in this interview. And as a board member.
Yeah.
You obviously can't get involved in all the things that we've been talking about. So you've become a policymaker and I just wonder whether you've given some thought to how you're going to make that transition. And how you're going to contain your enthusiasm for the details of education. And within the constraints of the role of a board member.
So. I, yes, I understand. I will take what I have learned by being in the weeds. In terms of implementing policy that meets the needs of our students, in terms of. Adopting curricula that meets the needs of our students. One of my favorite parts of being on the board would be being a school liaison. So I will continue to be talking, you know, to students, to parents there. But as a policymaker, I will look at it through the lens of an educator. But I won't be um, getting into the weeds. I will not be, you know, in a curriculum meeting. That's not my role. But I'm taking everything I've learned to help create policies, to implement policies. And to build back the collaborative community because an important piece for me is that the members, the community of Palo Alto. Teachers, parents can email me and they know Shawna's going to respond. She's going to respond with kindness. She will offer to, um. You know, have a phone call if needed. And so I think by having someone on the board with an educator background. Who has years of experience with kids in the district, who's an alum of the district. Um, I've built trust in this community and. Having someone on the board that they can email, they know they will respond to, I think will decrease parent anxiety in this community. I think it will build back trust. Because all that I've been doing, you know, since twenty-two is trying to help public education or trying to help parents. Help understand public education. Um, and I was doing the school consulting while also subbing, right? It wasn't one or the other. I was doing both. Um, and so I will, you know, I will use what I've learned. But a big part as well is having someone on the board where. Parents feel and teachers feel comfortable emailing and knowing that I will respond and treat with kindness and empathy and integrity.
That's great. Uh, Adam, did you have anything you want to ask Shawna?
Uh, just uh, as I enter this role, uh, taking over to embark a there on the media. Um, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that you read Palo Alto online daily.
I do.
But would love to get some feedback from you on what you think we could be doing better, um, what you like. Uh, what opportunities do you think we have? Um, and both as a member of the community and person who lives in Palo Alto. And and knows Palo Alto so well, um, but also as a potential board member.
Would you like that now or in the future? Sorry, is this a question? Oh, okay. Um, one of my favorite things about the weekly is opportunities for students. To be recognized and published, kind of like I'm going back to the ELD, students being recognized and published, but you offer, you know, short story contests. This has been around since at least the nineties, um, back when I was age eligible. I would love to see an opportunity for students who are English language learners to also. Like a, a separate contest for English language learners to do a short story contest. So they can also feel that pride and recognition. Um, and especially in print, when we did the ELD speech contest, we printed all the speeches and we made it into a book. So they could see their work published. And I do know that for students having that opportunity, which I'm thinking, um, the weekly for. Is great. If we could also include English language learners, I think that would be even better.
Great idea.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time today. We really appreciate being able to hear a little bit more of your thoughts and uh, I wish you the best on your campaign.
Thank you and thank you all for your recording and for all you do to inform the community.
Thanks Shawna.